Agreement with H.P. Fairfield for a Johnson-Vac sweeper. And four three is review request of Police Chief Irving Marshall to appoint Brent Davis as a police officer. Any other? I guess not, okay. Approval of meeting minutes? What do we have for minutes here?
Actually, we don't have any.
Didn't see any, okay. So there's none there. appointments and hearings, we're a couple minutes early, I'm gonna skip down. Summer meeting schedule, 3.1. Did you get hear from all of us as to?
Uh, no, I know that you're away for a week in July. I'm gonna be out, um, two weeks after that. But I don't know about anybody else.
If, I don't, I'm, I don't know when my vacation is yet, if it happens to fall in a week, that we have a meeting, I'll just come back forward. I mean, I'm not very, I won't be very far away.
Um, there's probably-
When are we, when are we scheduled?
Normal meetings would be July 1 and 15. The 15th is the last week of, of the fiscal year closeout. So there's, there is a very good chance that there'll be some, some transfers or some year-end things that, that need to be done. I know that there were a couple last year at the, in the second week or so of July. So we may wanna pencil the 15th in there. Although, that's the week you're away, right?
I'm away that week.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't-
We can try to keep it just to-
Just keep it brief and-
Just to transfer as if that's all we-
Yeah, that's fine.
If that's all we have.
Does that work for you guys?
And we're meeting, and we're meeting next week for the pipeline. And there may be, there may be a need to do a little bit of business either at the beginning of that or at the end of that. So we can try to wrap some things into that. So I guess it comes down to whether you wanna meet on the, on the, on July 1st or 8th.
All right, my only concern on July 1st, can we hold on to that thought? Because I could've sworn that that was what Pepperle was asking us about for the coalition too.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So let's hold that thought on, on the 1st. Assume that there will be a meeting to clean up any business on the 15th.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll just resume our schedule on the 29th. Unless you guys want to-
Last year, we did, we did one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
Well, we could do that too. How's that sound, Carolyn?
I guess it depends how much business comes in. I know we have a lot going on, but I'm very flexible, so.
Okay. So if, why don't we say the 15th anyway?
Okay.
And, and August 12th.
And then for next week-
And then if something else, like Carolyn said, if something else comes up and we need a quick meeting in between-
That's what we did last summer.
Okay? Is that reasonable?
So take the first two weeks of July off, at least temporarily?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, though, next week's meeting, we should probably, as Andy suggested, meet earlier for a work session.
Work session?
Just to discuss a few of the issues at hand before the meeting.
What are you reading?
This is an email from the town clerk.
Okay, well, Andy, you can talk about that a little late in your updates, okay?
Sure.
All right. So let's assume that that's our schedule right now, but give us a call if something comes up and we'll schedule something else.
Okay.
7:05, Board of Health Chairman Chris Ginota, Health Administrator Carla Walter, and Tessa David of Nastos will discuss the FY15 curbside trash and recycling program. Hi, how are you?
Greetings.
Hi. Okay, so, what's happening? Hi, Tessa.
We're gonna let Tessa speak.
Okay.
So we have a great opportunity now with our new, with additional resources for recycling. A flyer went out to all the households, talking about the new program where the bags are going down, that are allowed from three to two. And that can be a bag or a 33-gallon container or a large, if you already have a large toter, but not to exceed 64 gallons, so that the total is to 33 gallons equivalent. On the other side, it has all sorts of recycling options for those. Many of those can go at the curb. We got some input from some people, and some very good input, and we've taken a look at the flyer and see where we can clarify that further, where a number of the items can go at the curb and those that are too big is basically what it boils down to. If they're plastics that aren't one through, that aren't one through sevens, or they're larger than a two-and-a-half gallon, or say, five-gallon pail, those can go to the recycling center. And the reason that happens, or at least the reason it's happening right now, and we're looking at the sites to see how they're processing these materials, is the equipment that sorts the material gets tangled up with larger items and isn't expecting it when you just have the smaller household items, drinking cups and whatnot. That equipment is currently looking for medium-size, under two-and-a-half gallons or, two-and-a-half gallon containers, or, and, or loose bags. That's another item that tends to, with the current engineering, jam up the equipment. So while it's highly recyclable, plastic bags, those can go back to the grocery stores where you pick them up. Oftentimes, Car- Target now has them and Hanford's does, and right there at the entrance, you can drop those off, so that's a good thing. So then also, there's the, been an updated flyer on the website. This is a real good one, and we're looking at possibly with the reduction now with the bags, that now for extenuating items, there's overflow bags that are gonna be available at Hanford's and, pardon?
Town Hall.
Yeah, Town Hall, McNabb's, Farmacee will have them.
That case.
And the recycling center, and the Red Brick, Red Brick store for those times when you have more than what is normal, normal item, so you can pick up that excess. And that, they'll have those available to, for those extra times when you have something other than the normal. But what's wonderful, and what we're refining, and what the industry is looking at, how can we handle all this recycling? Because there are manufacturers now that want that material. They need it, they're making other products, it's feedstock for them. So that's all the really good news, and we're encouraging more. And it ends up costing the town less because that is something you don't have to pay to dispose of. And while we got a good agreement with our, our renewal with Shaw's, it's still, you're paying to dispose of it. But if, if residents, the more they can set aside for the recycling, the more we don't, the town, or the less that the town actually has to pay to dispose of that.
I'd like to ask for the chairman of the Board of Health.
The chairman was not available tonight.
Wasn't available tonight.
We discussed that in the previous meeting.
Um, let's just, I mean, we can certainly just listen to the presentation. Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, my name is Tom Daley, I live on Fitchburg Road in Townsend. And if, my memory serves me correct, this program was established by the residents of Townsend in a ballot vote. The ballot vote was three to one for curbside rubbish pickup. This, to me, is nothing but a backdoor program into pay-as-you-go. If you're gonna cut my rubbish pickup from 33 and a third to 50 percent, I want that money back in my real estate taxes. Not in the general fund, not to anybody else. I'd like to know who gives the Board of Health the right to overturn a town, a town vote.
Tom, answer that?
Sure.
Um, when a, when a town passes an override, the override amount-
It wasn't an override, it was an up-and-down vote for rubbish pickup.
It was an override for trash. It was an override vote for trash pickup. When a, when a, an override vote is passed, it's, it's only, the purpose is only for the first year. So if we pass an override this year for a million dollars for pick-up program, schools, and then the schools don't need all of that next year, that million dollars plus two-and-a-half percent annual can be repurposed to something else. It doesn't have to go back for an additional vote. So there have been a couple of votes over the years, a couple of override votes related to trash. I, I understand your point, Tom, but there's nothing, nothing inappropriate or illegal about, about the way that the finances are being done. The Board of Health is by statute responsible for, for trash collection. And so they can modify the program as they see fit in order to-
Well, if they're saving money, where is the savings going?
Okay, I, the saving, the money is, the prices are going up. Every year, the price goes up. What Tessa referred to is the tipping fees. That's the amount of money that it costs for us, for Shaw, our contractor, to go and dispose of our trash. And the price every year goes up. In order to avoid coming back to you for an override, okay, for more money, instead, what we've done is we've worked with Shaw's and worked with the recycling, which by the way is mandatory. It's a state law to, that, that we're supposed to recycle, okay? And we're attempting to try to get people to embrace that concept, okay? It, it shouldn't be something that's considered a terrible thing to do. It's a wonderful thing to do.
It's not a wonderful thing.
It's a wonderful thing to do because all of those petroleum products are going back into the landfills and they are poisoning our environment.
The second largest city, New York City, does not curbside recycle. They gave it out.
Well, I'm glad that I don't live in New York City then.
Really?
Hold on, hold on one second, because you asked about the, the money part, okay?
Yep.
I think the Board of Health is doing a fantastic job at keeping our costs for that collection down. I think that the solution that they've presented in reducing the amount gradually over the last two years, gradually reducing the amount that you can put in, is a good solution. Because at the same time, we're gradually learning how to recycle other things. And we've instituted a curbside pickup for every other week as well. It, it becomes habitual, I think it's a wonderful habit, I think it's the greatest thing we can be teaching our children about our environment. So I don't look at it as the Board of Health is, is usurping any authority or any law that you gave them by, by your vote. Now, you don't have to purchase those extra bags. You, you don't have to. It's just if, for example, all five of my kids and their kids come over, I'm gonna have more trash that week. I'm gonna have more trash. And I might not be able to fit it in those two bags or in that one big container. So I'll, I'll purchase a few of those bags for those times. Do you, how much, how much rubbish do you have in a week?
This has nothing to do with, with the amount of rubbish-
I'd like to speak for the police.
That I created.
One second. Would you wanna finish?
I'm in favor of you, sir. I, I don't, I know everybody's aware of the fact that I'm Jim LeQuire, I've been on the Board of Health, my, this is my 13th year. And I wanted to tell you something. Right now, the Board of Health is not running this crash contract at all. Mr. Sheehan and Ms. Test are running this crash contract. And that's why we're here tonight, we're all in dismay. Because I asked her politely when I was chair to leave us alone five years ago. We got into devils, okay? I'm gonna bring that up again, it's a real thorn in my side.
That has nothing to do with this-
Okay, but we don't need to have this thing put down our throats the way it's been put down our throats, because the Board of Health has been pressured into making this decision. And I've gotta be firm and steadfast that I am not in agreement with it, I'm in agreement with all the taxpayers, and what's going on here is wrong. The chairman couldn't even make arrangements to be here tonight on a voted meeting. I wasn't invited, I came in my own free-will and accord because something has to be done. We don't need to stick this down the taxpayers' throats the way we're doing it.
I have a question. Did the Board of Health vote for this contract?
It wasn't unanimous.
The majority of the board voted for it, therefore, it happens. I understand you were a dissenting vote, but part of being on a board is understanding that there are times that the majority is going to rule.
Is this what you see the whole time, rebelling against the fact that the board wasn't making the decision because other people are influencing it too much?
The board did make the decision. If you were outvoted, that has to do with who was on the board and what their opinion was. And your opinion can differ, that's fine.
The capping of the landfill, all the other areas of town that we worked and everything were fine-
I'm not going to get, I am not gonna get into this.
Because we got these two people down our throats, we've got this stuff.
Sue, can I-
Yes.
Add one more thing to Tom's original question, which is, where's the additional money going?
Yes.
We're not saving anything next year on this trash program. We're not reducing the trash budget next year. We're, we're saving by not-
You're not gonna be saving anything.
The budget, the budget is actually $4,000 more next year than, than it was, than it is the year that's ending in June. We're avoiding costs, but we're not reducing the, the trash budget next year.
If you're going from three bags to two bags, that's a 33 and a third percent reduction on the rubbish you're picking up, and you're telling me they're charging you the same amount with a 33 and a third percent reduction?
The cost to pick up is based on how often they come and how many households they have. It's roughly 430,000, maybe? Something like that.
And the tipping.
Where we're going to find the savings is on the disposal side, on the, what's called the tipping fee. That's per-ton cost. So if we can reduce costs, if we can reduce the tonnage that we dispose of, so we take, we take trash, we take tonnage out of trash and we recycle more, we, we'll get a savings there. We can't predict what that's gonna be, because some people don't put out three barrels now. A lot of people only put out one barrel now. So they're not gonna be, they're not gonna change by this, this change in the contract.
Yeah, but Andy, regardless, what I'm saying is, you're reducing my services, a service that, that was voted for by the taxpayers in this town. Nobody voted to have an increase in recycling, nobody voted to have a decrease in rubbish bags picked up.
Did-
Did they or did they not?
Did the vote say how many bags you were voting for?
Well, well, since this vote passed, it's always been the same. Three, as far as I know of.
No, it's actually been going down for the last several years, Tom.
For the last couple of years at least.
Stated where? Stated by who? This is the first time I've ever seen this.
Right. It's, it's, it's been in the last two trash contracts. Goes back at least several years.
Was it published anywhere?
It's always been on the website.
Yeah, it's been on the website. I don't know if there were, I don't know if there were mailings that went to people's houses.
Yeah, for the three-bag limit, it was, for the-
It's on the schedule too.
About four and six, yeah.
Now, any, any savings, is this going, going towards the recycling program?
Actually, recycling makes us money.
Right. So if we save money in, in, beginning July 1, from July 1 till next June 30th, if we save money, that savings will go to what we call free cash. It's the, it's the unspent money at the end of the year. Now, when we're preparing the budget nine months from now for fiscal year 16, we're gonna look at, look at what we're spending on trash, and if we see a noticeable decline, yeah, we'll probably change the budget. And that, that money will be redirected to somewhere else.
John?
I'll go back to a comment you two made a few minutes ago. You said, well, some weeks, you have extra stuff. Is this, oh, two bags, my average for the year, or is this a requirement each week?
Well, you certainly don't have to put out two bags.
No, but if I put out one bag and one bag, and then next, the third week out, I have three bags.
You have to pay.
Why do I have to pay? Why, I'm being penalized because I only put out one bag, one bag, and then I got three bags because I-
Can I just-
My, my lifestyle is not constant. Every week.
I, I understand, I understand, but I have a question for you, okay? I understand the, what you're, what you're saying, and my house is the same, it's not constant. What would you suggest to me of how administratively with our collect-
What's wrong with the honor system?
Okay. Well, that would work for you, John, but it might, and it might work for me, but there are those that I see putting six.
All right, there's another solution then.
You know?
If they give us, every, every household, 100 bags at the beginning of the year, just give us 100 bags each. Then we can use them, all of them this week, or none of them this week, and one or two, and by, if I run out of them by the end of the year, I'll have to buy extra.
Right.
But if you give me 100 bags, then I, doesn't make any difference whether I put them all, all out once or all out. Just give me my 100 bags at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so that's a suggestion you'd like to make to the Board of Health?
Yeah, and that certainly-
That's a, that's a-
That's something that, that is definitely here it is.
And I, you know, I'm still getting my average of $2 a week, but I can, oh, whatever I got.
I totally understand, and I, and I appreciate your giving that as a suggestion, okay? And Carl, I'm gonna ask you and, and Mr. LeQuire to bring those, that suggestion back to the board and see what they might say. You have to understand, the Board of Health is an elected board, we're just, we're just doing a presentation right now, we're just listening to what, what's going on. Yes, you had a question?
Can somebody please clarify this note on the plastic recycling? I mean, an ice tray, you can't put an ice tray in your recycling bin? I mean, that's a little bit ridiculous, isn't it? I mean, you're not, it's not gapping, it's a little ice tray.
I think it depends, and, and Tessa, you might be able to help.
That's a very good point. And there were some, this, this graphic was used from Springfield, and each area has something different, and we're looking at the site, and we think that they're gonna be able to take, as long as they're not bigger than a two-and-a-half-gallon container. So all containers, if they're plastics, one through seven, if it's a plastic, one through seven, and it's not bigger than like two-and-a-half gallons, in fact, I just called the hauler today to see where are you taking this, will the facility that you're taking it? Because these are things you won't even find even on the big guy's websites, because it's all regional. It's all based on where that hauler is taking the material.
So we really, we really-
So that's a very good question. We would like to be able to-
We could revise this, and we really should revise this picture.
I really appreciate that, because, you know, like-
Says the list is on the-
I really don't like cakes. Father's Day, they brought a cake, and brought it over to my house, and says, oh, I can't put the dome in there.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
You know, I mean, these are things that you're looking at, and, oh my God.
That's a good example.
It's a very good example.
Hi, I'm the Chair of the Townsend Recycling Committee, Irene Congdon at 163 Brookline Street. We just, we were in the process of our meeting, we kinda took a break, we were downstairs and came up. The, we want to share with everybody that if you have specific questions, you're welcome. You can call the Board of Health, and in most cases, Carly gives me the number, and I've called many people in town of very specific questions. The graphic is a graphic, it has most of the information on there, but if you, we wanna get everybody to recycle, if you can rip it, paper, put it in the bin. If it's a bottle, a container, one through seven, no plastic bags, no styrofoam in the curbside thing, we wanna make that education very simple for the masses. If you are a hardcore recycler and wanna do a little more, and you have a specific question or a specific item, please call me, please email me. Well, I am not only the Townsend Recycling Committee Chair, I also work for the state in Massachusetts as the recycling coordinator for all of central Mass. So I have, we do have different connections, that we work a lot with the haulers, and a lot of our material goes local. So there is a lot of facilities, paper, you know, and Fitchburg has a mill to make paper. And some of our stuff goes there, sometimes it doesn't. We have stuff that, in, in Leominster, that's a plastic industry, they are recycling a lot of stuff that we buy. In Milford, Massachusetts, they do glass. So there's a lot of stuff that can go local, and it depends on the hauler to go where it is. So please contact me if our facility at the curb cannot take it, the recycling center could. We can add more, we can add more hours, we can decide to make it more feasible. Those are things the recycling committee can do, and we offer suggestions to the Board of Health and see if the Board of Health will approve it, and the Board of Selectmen to approve it, and then we can go the next level. The recycling committee will be at the Bandstand concerts starting Thursday. Hopefully, it won't be rained out again for the second time, but we're there. If you have questions, please contact us. I'll probably have my white dogs with me, or at least one. We have recycling stickers available, I will be handing them out at the common. So if you need more recycling space, take your old trash container, your old Sterilite container, put this on there, and you can have more recycling access. We have them at the Town Hall, at the Board of Health office, we have them at the recycling center. The recycling center's open this Saturday, and we're doing a special thing, and I'm sorry, I didn't get into the paper. The timing keeps on getting a little tight. But books, bikes, and outdoor play equipment, we're gonna be taking special this Saturday at the recycling center. We actually take them all the time, but those particular items, we'll be doing reuse. So it's kinda like a take-it-or-leave-it event. So if you bring a bike and you say, oh, I, you know, my child outgrew that little bike, we need the next bike, well, bring your bikes and let's go up the next age level for free. You know, it's the swap. And whatever's left over will be going to charity. That's this Saturday. If people wanna recycle more, a lot of people don't realize, the recycling center does take paper and containers. So the first and third Saturday, you can bring.
I, I, I'd like to address the recycling center. And, and I have a suggestion, if, if you could also bring that back to the Board of Health, please. And that is, for those people who find it difficult or have not, haven't got a way to bring the big baskets and, and the, the large plastic toys or whatever, if, I'm sure if they called you guys, somebody could arrange to pick them up, but we don't want to do that like on a regular basis. So the suggestion that someone gave me was, can a couple times a year, you know, just know, you know what, save a few of these things, put them in the back of your shed or, or something, and twice a year, can you come around and pick up those bulky plastics for us? I think that would be a big help to those of us who either have a very small vehicle or no vehicle at all. We don't, my point is, we can't make the, the function of recycling so complex and so complicated that people get frustrated and don't do it, okay? We've gotta make it so that it's an easy, simple thing to think about, and, and like the lady said, you know, take that cake container and, yep, I know this is recyclable, and put it in there. So I'm gonna just use my sifter in my brain that says, okay, if it's bigger than a, how about a clothes basket, you know, if it's the size of a small clothes basket, I'm gonna put it-
Bring it to the recycling center.
I'm gonna put it in the back of my shed and get it there at some point, you know? I just, I, what I don't wanna have happen is us throw away the baby with the bath water in terms of, of recycling, okay? We don't wanna discourage people from doing it, yes.
No one still answered my question, why are we going, why are we cutting the rubbish pickup?
What would you like it to be, sir?
I would like it to be what it currently is, three bags.
Okay, and would you like to pay for that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I'm not paying for it, I'd like my money back.
Would you like us to ask the Board of Health how much money it would cost to go back to that?
Fine. I'd like the Board of Health to answer, how much does it cost to pick up a ton of plastic, and what do you get paid for? Or what do we get paid for? How much does it cost to pick up a ton of newsprint? What do we get paid for?
What I, what I think might help is for you to go to the next Board of Health meeting and maybe send them a little note that these are your questions.
They can answer the question.
But the, the board is not here. This is not the Board of Health. Tessa, and, you know, Carly works for the Board of Health, we have one Board of Health member. You need to talk with the Board of Health.
Does anybody in this room know what those figures are? Andy, do you know?
Well, for the year that's, that's ending now, well, I can give you a partial answer. For the year that's ending now, we budgeted $625,000 for trash pickup, for curbside collection, trash and recycle. A portion of that goes to the, to the hauler to drive around and, and pick it all up, and a portion of it goes to the, to the tipping fee. So we've essentially level-funded for next year. If- If we, if we had kept the, we're on the assumption that our cost is going to go down, because we assume that our tonnage is going to go down. We can't predict what that's going to be. We can't just say, we're reducing it by a third, so our cost is going to go down by a third. We don't know if it's going to work that way, because three years ago, we had unlimited, right? Carla, was it unlimited three years ago, or was it six barrels?
Four. It's four years ago.
Four years ago. It was unlimited. We've slowly implemented a restriction on the number of barrels or bags that you can put out. So we were at five, we were at four, now currently, we're at three, we're going to two. We've seen some reduction, but we haven't seen a 50% cut. It just, it doesn't work that way. Some people only put out a barrel, you know, one barrel a week. Other people put out five barrels. So that, it's those families where you're going to see the savings. The smaller households, the households that recycle on a really stringent basis, we're not going to get the savings out of them. I know that probably doesn't answer your question, but it's a very fluid
Does anybody have those figures? What it costs to pick up a ton of plastic, and what we get for it?
Okay, sir, I really think
I'm asking a question.
Yes, and I'm the chair, and please go through the chair, okay? I want you to go and direct your questions to the Board of Health. It's their budget. Andy helps them with the contract, as does Tessa. This is free help that the Board of Health gets, okay? You need to go to the Board of Health to ask the questions that are as specific as what you're asking, because it's their jurisdiction, not ours, okay?
Well, Andy's the town administrator.
Yes, and I'm sure Andy helps all the time with that.
That someone should know what it costs to pick up a ton of plastic.
My point is that that wasn't the discussion that we were going to have tonight. We're not prepared, yes, overall, overall, but not all of those little, you know, how much for this and how much for that. Andy doesn't have those numbers in front of him. We didn't know those questions were going to come up, and they really should be directed to the Board of Health. Carolyn, I'm sorry, you had a question.
That's okay. I just, I've heard from a lot of residences last week about it, and too, the understanding of the override that you had brought up. We did pass two overrides, the tune of $704,000 for trash pickup, and then the recycling program of $10,000. So while it's absolutely legal, I've heard from a lot of people, they're feeling like they're not getting their money's worth, and I can understand that. One of the things that have been brought to my attention by numerous residents, and this is more for the Board of Health, is large families feel very uncomfortable with the ability to be able to put out two bags, and they feel that, as though they're being punished. And also, people who have medical issues, and they have a lot of medical stuff they have to dispose of, they feel that they're being punished. But I'm sure these are questions that you took into consideration when you were discussing.
Absolutely.
The only other question that I did have was in regards to the bags. I know that we're allowing, you explained to me that we're allowing them to keep a quarter per bag for selling them for us. Are we going to have any issues with, do we have to send it, kind of like out to bid, offer it to all the town businesses, or are we going to have any procurement issues, depending on the volume of bags we go through?
I mean
Not going to pay.
I mean, how much money are we talking about?
Because this is only extra, so it didn't overflow.
All right, how many bags did you order?
1,000.
1,000.
So even that, it's only $250.
It was $263.
It doesn't trip the threshold.
And we offered it to all the businesses to sell, so they
If they, we offered it to the businesses that we thought would be interested in it, and some have declined, actually, that they did not want to.
A lot of extra people.
And there is no sales tax on the waste control bags.
And in the case of McNabb Pharmacy, we're not taking anything from it. We're just, all the money that we take in, we're giving back to the Board of Health.
I think Ann Ford said the same, yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a couple things to go back to the Board of Health with.
Can I get two seconds, Andy, if you have a second?
Sure.
Well, just listening to everybody, Mr. Daly, John, and whatnot, it seems like we're going through a bit of a transition, but we need to embrace where we are going with recycling. I mean, years past, we would throw much more into our rubbish and our trash, that's where our increase was. It sounds like everybody has to go through this transition, except where we're going with recycling. As you said, Sue, we are making money on recycling.
Well, we're at least
Or if it's a break-even situation.
Right, it offsets costs.
If recycling has bring us to a little bit more success, and we're losing less tonnage in the rubbish, because it's going into recycling, I mean, it's a win-win situation for everybody, as far as where the bags are, how much they're going to cost. It's a transition. It's a situation we all need to acclimate ourselves to, embrace and go with, because it's the future. Do we really want to keep putting something that can be recycled in a landfill, where it could go to a better product or a better use? We need to recycle. It's something that, it's a good situation, and it's, there's no loss in it, it's a win-win thing. We need to try to acclimate to it, try to make that change, that transition where we focus more on the recycling, and, you know, and less trash.
But what's the point I'm trying to make?
Truly.
It isn't cost efficient. When you're getting $40 a ton for newsprint, and it costs you $200 a ton to collect it, what is the sense of collecting newsprint?
It's all a matter of the transition.
It's by a degradable, it rocks
All right, all right, all right. You really need to go to the Board of Health for a lot of these. Janice?
I'll challenge anybody to beat me on recycling.
Good for you.
However, you can't recycle everything. Stuff like put in the trash, I'm sure is going to come to more than two bags a week. Sometimes I don't feel well on Tuesday night, or any night, but Tuesday, if I don't feel well Tuesday night, I can't put my trash out. So the next week, I'm putting out twice as much trash.
So would John's solution
So what are you going to do? Tell me I'm going to pay $2 for more trash bags? Nobody knows me if they think I'm going to pay that. You can give me extra trash bags if you want, but I am not paying you one cent for an extra bag.
Good for you, ma'am, good for you.
Janice, it sounds like John's solution, John's proposed solution might work for you too, that if you had, you know, the 100 bags or whatever for the whole year given to you, you can put them out however you want each week, you know? Yeah.
Can I make one clarification, just so everybody understands? The bag limit is based on a 33-gallon bag, the big, in this case, a big purple bag. But it's the big, generally, black bags that you buy at the hardware store or at Walmart. It's not the kitchen bags, you can fit about three kitchen bags.
Eight-year-old size.
Or you can fit an eight-year-old in.
You want to kneel there?
Yeah, rotten plastic, please.
Eight-year-old size, this is pretty big.
Yeah, just one comment. Children, we've got something else, but if you've got extra trash, be friendly with your neighbor, they might have less. We work that around a lot in the neighborhood.
John, I'm going to call on you anytime we need suggestions. You've got a few of them, yes, in the back.
Mike Turm, he's an awesome guy. I think you should add a little bit of education on the graphic about the weight issue. I mean, do you keep your barrels covered? Get the rain in, you're moving. I mean, if we're paying for weight, if you're getting water in there, there's things that add to the weight that really don't need to go in the trash, and you add something to the flyer that lets people know that the important thing is reducing the weight.
Composting helps as well.
That's especially important for paper and cardboard.
Yes.
I think this town's very good. I went back to the town reports for four years, and we, our trash has been coming down slowly. So, I mean, we are doing the right thing.
That's right.
And our recycling has gone up, not quite much, but it has gone up. So, I mean, we are doing the right thing.
Yes, Jim.
If I could address everybody, in conjunction with what you just said, sir, as the Board of Health, as a member, that we are working on getting toders for one of our upcoming contracts, so that everybody's trash will be confined into a toder. It's going to have less trash going into the woods, the streams, et cetera. It definitely eliminates snow load, water load, et cetera, for tonnage purposes, and this is being worked on as we speak, trust me, okay? And please attend our Monday night meeting, because everybody there, we can make something happen, everybody's fair enough, okay?
Okay, so I'd like to close this, because I think we've gone around enough. I think that it was great to hear from folks, thank you for the information, and if you could do a little cleanup, and maybe just put it on the website to start off, to avoid the confusion that I had too, because when I saw the little, you know, the little pots, that was, Carla and I had just talked about that a couple weeks ago. I had so many pots from the nurseries, and I said, can I recycle those? So, John, thank you so much for that suggestion. Pass it along to the board.
There's more, don't worry.
Okay.
When is the decision made on a suggestion like that?
I don't know
Or are we just July 1st, that's it?
July 1, the new limits go into effect. So something like John mentioned, that wouldn't be able to go into effect for probably another Contract has already been, has been signed and awarded to Shaw's for next year with these new restrictions.
I just have one last question. Has any money, or is any money going to transfer to the recycling program from the rubbish pickup? Example, at the town meeting, there was a denial of $71,000 to increase the recycling program.
Right.
This is not going to pay for that.
Are you going to backdoor any money into that?
No. No, and none of the, any savings is not redirected to the recycling center either, that runs on a revolving account, so. And back to, one more, return back to another question of yours, which is, what's the cost per ton for pickup? I don't have all the numbers, but it's around $100 a ton, whether it's trash, or plastic, or paper.
And you'll go to the Board of Health to get your specific questions answered, I think, okay?
One more question, please.
Please come Saturday. I really want to end this, I'm going to allow two more questions, and that's it. Jim?
Your question about the $72,000, that was to go to weekly recycling at the cost of $0.88 a household. That was proposed, and the town didn't want to go that way.
Yes.
Please come Saturday at the recycling center, bring all the other stuff that says no, we'll take it at the recycling center, and we'll help you out for increasing recycling, electronics, books, bikes, bulky plastic. Come on over Saturday, 7:00 to 2:00.
On Greenville Road.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Have a good one.
Thank you, John. Okay, 7:10, Friends of the Library and the Towns and Couples Club, sorry we're late, to discuss events celebrating the fifth anniversary of the Library Senior Center Meeting Hall, including a proposed wine tasting. Who are we meeting with here? Yes?
Melissa and others.
There are celebrity trustees here in support.
Okay.
Carolyn Sellers from the Endowment.
I'm presenting the fifth anniversary committee today.
Congratulations, by the way, to us for five years already, huh?
Yeah. So the Couples Club and the Friends of the Townsend Public Library would like to host a wine and cheese tasting event/funderizer in the library meeting hall as part of the fifth year anniversary festivities. We are seeking permission tonight from the Board of Selectmen to serve alcohol on town property.
Colin?
Couple questions.
Sure.
When would this, what time of the day, and what day of the week would this be taking place?
Saturday evening.
Okay. And would you have insurance?
Yes.
For the liability insurance to cover?
The Friends of the Library are willing to acquire liquor liability insurance, and also hire police detail.
Okay. And then, the other question is, will children be allowed in the area that this is going on?
No.
They will not be in the room?
21-plus.
21-plus. So somebody, if they brought their kids, they can't go, they're not going to be able to bring their kids in with them?
No.
I'm sorry, the time, day and time?
Um
I mean, day of the week.
It would be a Saturday evening.
And is the library typically closed then?
Yes.
Carolyn, did you have any questions?
We were allowed alcohol on the Common one year. I'm sorry, we allowed alcohol on the Common one year, one-day liquor license
2/75, right?
2/75. And we read the Rite Act, because it was a violation of our bylaw. I just want to be sure that
Could you read it?
Sure. "No person shall drink any alcoholic beverages as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 1, while on or in or upon any public way or upon any way to which the public has a right of access, or any public common, park, or playground, or any place to which members of the public have access as invitees or licensees, or any private land or place without consent of the owner or person in control of such public or private land or place. All alcoholic beverages being used in violation of this bylaw shall be seized and safely held until the charge against the person or persons arrested or summons before the court, at which time they shall be returned to the person entitled to lawful possession. Whoever violates this bylaw shall be punished by a fine of not more than $50."
So does that mean this would be okay as long as we approved it?
That's what I'd just like to have double-checked, because I don't have a problem with the wine tasting there at all, as long as we're not going to get in trouble with that again.
Okay, I do have one other question. Just a short time ago, we had a discussion about the use of the meeting hall during off-hours, library and senior center off-hours. And one of the decisions that was made, if I remember correctly, was if it's off-hours, there's nobody to mind the store, and therefore, we wouldn't be having any functions allowed. Stacy, can you help me with that?
We have various, Friends of the Library have their book sales, you know, I think what we had said, if the Friends of the Library and Friends of the Senior Center were involved, that, you know, that would be an exception, that would
I did not hear that at that meeting that we went to.
There's exceptions made quite often.
That's been the general approach to that.
The Friends have
It was private, it was private groups that, especially private groups that wanted to use it after-hours, and especially if they wanted to use the kitchen. But for groups affiliated with the town or affiliated with the building in some fashion.
Okay, I did not hear that. In that meeting, I did not hear that, okay? So I'm just clarifying the fact that we discussed using the building on off-hours, that there was no custodian, and who would be watching to make sure that folks cleaned up, et cetera. There was no exception for the Friends of the Library at that time, okay?
I thought I remember talking
There was no exception. That exception was not brought up, okay? And I'm just pointing that out, okay? So that if that is an exception, and I will assume that it is, it would be up to that group to make sure that everything was cleaned up the way that it needed to be, and all of the concerns that were voiced about after-hours events at that building would be taken care of. Well, just
The only other thing that would make me feel a lot better about doing something like this, if we instituted policy, drafted policy, to distinguish between cheese and wine tasting versus having one-day all-alcoholic licenses. And right now, we don't have anything aligning that.
Okay. The thing that I am concerned with is, as I have been in the past, setting a precedent, because
I agree.
You know, and it goes to your point, you know?
If we had policy.
Policy could kind of help us around that, but, or at least set the guidelines for those kinds of situations, but, John?
I would certainly not be in favor of something like this. From my point of view, you're certainly, like you said, you're going to set a precedent, and they're going to use it, well, this was one, well, beer is no different, you know, it's light beer, whatever, and pretty soon, you've got problems all over the place. I would not, in my opinion, would not allow alcohol starting at any place on town property.
I mean, I'm inclined to agree, and lacking a policy of some sort that would help to protect protect us for the next time and be able to make a decision. I mean, you know, it's not that we don't trust this particular organization or organizations, but it kind of puts us in a difficult position going forward because then, you know, another group comes to us and wants the same kind of thing. And what do we say? Because we haven't got any guidelines written.
The exception is, this will benefit the library directly. All proceeds will go to the library.
Well, I think I disagree with that because that's no different than a magazine subscription kind of thing. You think that it's going to the school, but in fact, the subscription company or the magazine company is really making quite a bit of money. I would assume that the wine people are as well. But we won't go down that brat hole.
I just like, I believe that the library trustees have already endorsed this concept at their meeting last week, is it Thursday? So, the library trustees are, you know, are already in favor of it. And I think that, you know, I'm representing the fifth anniversary committee and we're trying to arrange a bunch of things for happening this fall to celebrate this amazing gift that we got five years ago. And here's a case where two different organizations in town, the Couples Club and the Friends of the Library, are coming together to say, we want to do something to pay back, you know, pay forward this wonderful gift. So, and I think, you know, if you're trying, these people who want to organize this event, they need to know, you know, do we bother trying to take the next step? It's my understanding, they were modeling this event after the one that's been done in Pepperell for many years.
And that's exactly what we heard a couple of years ago when the Friends asked for that before. You know, if Pepperell does it, why don't you? Well, we're not Pepperell.
So, I guess, you know, the, I guess the question I have is, what is the timeline? Are you willing to give, let these people go ahead and say, yeah, go ahead, plan this event, we can support this. At the same time, we'll be developing this policy based, maybe based on what we learned as we go through this event. We might learn what we want to put in the policy.
What's the date of this? When is, when are you planning on doing this? You may have said it before and I.
October 25th, whatever that Saturday.
October 25th?
Yep.
Give us time to draft policy and have a discussion.
Get that checked as well, whether we even have the.
So, what would you like to do? I would need a motion on the floor to do something.
Well, I would move, I think it would be a good idea for us to have policy in place so we're clear on what the intent is by allowing these type of functions and who we're allowing to have them. So, I would move that we draft language for a policy regarding the meeting room having wine tasting type of entertainment there before giving you our approval to say, go ahead.
It's kind of a long, drawn-out motion, it's more of a thought.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Colin?
Before we continue on, I mean, the first thing, the first question is whether, because you were questioning whether we even have the ability to do this, that would probably be a good start, in my opinion, to, whether the board has the authority to.
Well, the.
We have the authority.
You have the authority because it says, it says unless authorized by the owner. And you are the owner.
So, we own the library, whereas we didn't.
Right, right, right.
And where does the properties committee come in on this? Do they weigh in at all on usage of buildings for things?
In something like this, this is more of a custodial issue for the Board of Selectment to handle.
I just, so what you'd like to do is table this, drafted, pending drafting and approval of a policy?
Asking the town administrator to maybe work with the Friends of the Seniors and the folks to come up with something for us to look at.
Does that sound reasonable?
It does, yep.
It'd be useful to, for us to hear what you would like to see in that policy, what are specific things, rather than, you know, because we are in a relatively tight timeframe. We want to do this for the celebration in October. So, we want to come back to you quickly. You have a, you know, a shortened calendar, the summertime I ain't hearing, so, you know, we want to get something back to you fast. So, what do you want to see in that policy? What are the specifics?
Well, obviously, the protection for the town. I'm not for having an all-alcoholic license for any function on town property. So, it needs to, to me, it needs to be specific to what we're talking about, which is wine tasting.
And specific to this group.
And specific to this group.
As the Friends of the Library.
As much as allowed under law, you don't want to get into any discriminatory things, but.
So, as we.
Or maybe fundraisers for the town that are associated with town.
That's a good idea.
And is it the board's preference to make it wine-only? Typically, it's either all-alcohol or it's wine and beer, but I think you're within your rights to limit it or to condition it on a, on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, we can, it would be a one-day license for wine and beer, but we can put that as a condition on anything that we issue, so.
Okay.
Okay. So, can you come back to us maybe at the next meeting?
We sure can.
Some kind of draft, just to let folks know where I'm coming from. I don't believe that you have to have alcohol to have a good time or to celebrate. And I'm opposed to even draft, even approving a policy. So, I just want everybody to know where I'm coming from. As far as I'm concerned, alcohol doesn't belong in a public building.
I agree.
And that's just my opinion, but I have a vote, so.
I'd just like to let you know, other events that are happening to celebrate the fifth anniversary, they include, that don't, this is the only one that we're asking for alcohol. We're proposing, the Indian Hill Big Band is returning to the town, to the library on the end of September. Leading up to that, there are going to be dance lessons at the library in September. In November, this November weekend, it's like November 15th, whatever that weekend is, there's going to be a miniature golf setup that's going to go throughout the Townsend Library Meeting Hall and Senior Center. And that's kind of the big, a big celebration that we're going to have, the seniors are going to have displays of things, old-time things, like what is it, sort of thing. And it's going to be a fun event that's going to be free to everybody in town and we hope everybody comes out to it. So, a lot of, a lot of different activities being planned in relation to the celebration.
Okay. So, stay tuned on that one.
Please email Andy with any.
I'm sorry.
I would just like to point out that we have responsible people on this committee, and they were pretty clear about exactly what they wanted to do. I mean, it is just for the wine, it's just a short period of time, it is just to display the pride that this town has in the new facilities. We have very nice facilities, both for the Senior Center, for the library, and this meeting hall.
I agree, I brag on it all the time. I just don't agree with alcohol. Sorry.
You can very clearly tighten the constraints, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, let's move on. We did 3.1, 3.2 review contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers to provide landfill monitoring and reporting. Andy?
The Board of Health has provided a contract, they've already approved it for the monitoring and reporting at the landfill, the cast landfill. There's under the landfill closure agreement with DEP, we're required to do certain testing and monitoring of the landfill. It's essentially the same contract that we've had in place for the last five or six years or so. Pricing has, has pretty much remained the same. It varies, it fluctuates every other year depending on certain reporting requirements that are not required on an annual basis. So, for fiscal 15, the price is 20,400. In fiscal 16, it's 15,500 because some of the reporting is not required in that year. And then in fiscal 17, it goes back up to 20,400. So, the contract was provided to me the other day. It appears to be in roughly the same form as the one that we, that is just expiring now. So, I did not send it off to town council for their review, it's pretty straightforward. And the Board of Health has asked for, again, has signed it and requires the approval of the Board of Selectment as well.
Questions?
That was one of the questions I had had. I had asked Andy if town council had reviewed it. I, too, looked at the last contract and it's very similar, there's very few changes.
Do you think that's okay, then?
Yeah, I'd feel better if we just fax, approve it and fax it over to town council just so he has it, just to make sure.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I would move to approve the contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers to provide landfill monitoring and reporting.
Seconded.
You moved in seconded, any other questions? John?
I mean, you're in the middle of your vote, but I just, it's like, other landfills all around the state, you go in there and they've got electric panels out.
Yep.
Generating money for the town. Why aren't we doing something up there with that?
That's an excellent question, John, and that was a site that we identified a couple of years ago when we were, when we were looking at that. In order to, in order to hook up a solar farm, like you're talking about, the solar developer, the company that would be developing that, that solar farm, needs what's known as three-phase power. The simplest explanation is, when you look out on the street, there's three wires at the top of the hole.
It's not three-phase.
There's not three-phase. The nearest three-phase is at the corner of Dudley and Canal Street, or Dudley and Mason, where the West Townsend Meeting Room is. Three-phase ends there. I forget if it goes down Dudley, I don't think it does, but I don't recall. But from that point, all the way out Greenville Road and Mason Road, it's single-phase. So, you would have to, a developer would have to upgrade the whole electric infrastructure all the way out to Greenville Road. That makes the project uneconomic. It's a shame because.
You can't, you can't get Udel to put, run the line out. I mean, it would be to their interest.
It would be, but it's, but the cost would, would rob them of the profit, essentially. You know, it might, it might make it economic over 30 years or 40 years, but it wouldn't make it economic in a shorter period.
Because I was thinking of putting a solar farm out on my property.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. We'd love, we'd love to do it, but unfortunately, it's not economically feasible. You could put solar on your.
No, no, I'm talking about out in my field.
Yeah.
There's a bylaw question up in the air, I think, there, but.
Right.
But that, that could get changed.
Okay. All set to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we take a five-minute recess, please?
Sure.
Do the signing and just do some.
Okay, we're back. We're on item 3.3, review correspondence of the town of Pepperell regarding formation of a Middlesex County Coalition of Municipalities in opposition to the Tennessee gas pipeline. We got a letter from John, who's the town administrator over in Pepperell, at the request of the Board of Selectmen in Pepperell. Carolyn, I wonder if you, would you mind reading it just so that folks are aware of what's being discussed? Thank you.
This is from John Moke, the town administrator of Pepperell. I've been designated by the Townsend Board of Selectmen to correspond with you and your Board of Selectmen or Council regarding the formation of a Middlesex County Coalition of Municipalities in opposition to the Tennessee gas pipeline, as it has been presented to the communities and the private property owners. As in the case with the town of Pepperell, you may have experienced similar expressions of opposition to this project from your community. The Pepperell Board of Selectmen have been investigating means in which to support the citizen opposition to the opposed northeast expansion, extension of the Tennessee gas pipeline. The Board is strongly committed to supporting actions that will secure the property values of our residents and prevent the compromising of conservation land and natural resources, which appears to be inevitably, inevitable in the current proposal. The Board feels that the best way for communities to effectively oppose the proposed gas pipeline is to unite as a coalition to support the public interest in this matter. The Board proposes to form a Middlesex Coalition of Municipalities to address this issue and asks that you confer with your elected bodies to ascertain if your community would be interested in the formation of such a coalition. We believe that strength comes from a united group and would be pleased to work with our constituents on this issue impacting our municipalities. The formation or participation in such a coalition is not intended to replace specific efforts by individual communities, but rather is intended to serve as a forum for the efficient and expeditious, expeditious exchange of information and ideas and to ensure that all the communities are receiving and acting on a consistent set of facts and actions. The formation of such a coalition will have, would have to take place in a relatively expedient period of time. It would be best to have this coalition formed by July 1, 2014. Our thought would be to form the Coalition of the Middlesex County Municipalities affected by the proposed gas pipeline. The Coalition will be made up of one person from the elected municipal. The Coalition will be made up of one person from the elected municipal government body and the top management person in the community. Each municipality would have one vote on formal actions, but other staff members are welcome to attend the meetings as support. We would need to meet at least once a month, and the meeting should be scheduled during work hours if possible. The Coalition would meet as soon as July 1st, 2014, with those municipalities who have agreed to participate, and a mission statement and organizational structure would be established. This Coalition will also communicate with other groups of municipalities who have formed for a similar purpose. There may be a formal schedule of meetings to accomplish this. Please contact the Office before, by June 27th if your community would be interested in furthering this Coalition. The first meeting would be July 1st, 2014. We know this is close to the July 4th holiday. The holiday will push an organizational meeting out at least another week if we don't meet by the 1st. We propose a 10:00 AM start time with a two-hour limit for the first meeting, location to be announced once we have received commitments. The Pepperell Board of Selectmen, thank you for your consideration on this matter, and are open to suggestions of additional alternative means to unite to work towards a successful resolve to this issue. John Moke.
And this was sent, the other towns contact, the towns contacted Ashby, Drakett, Dunstable, Groton, Tooksbury, Tingsborough, Lowell, North Reading, Pepperell, Reading, Townsend, and Wilmington. Okay, your thoughts on this?
I went to a meeting at the library, and three Grotons left in there, and had asked me about it, and they, they were very happy that Pepperell was organizing something like that. So, I very much support it, and I hope my colleagues would support me on that.
I think it's great. No, I think it's a great, I mean, it's, it's, it's good that Pepperell's stepping up to the plate, organizing this.
Yes, I, I'm really glad that they have. I mean, it's what we talked about a while ago, is making sure that there was some kind of organization, and I think our conservation commissions collectively have all been working together, which has been great.
Yeah.
And we've been in contact, but this, this just kind of formalizes it, and I, and I think we need that formality in order for, to be taken seriously. So, I totally agree. In terms, and Andy, how, I, I mean, I know that there were those that say this is inevitable if they really push it, okay? I grew up back in the 60s, and...
Oh, not one of these stories again.
Oh, yes. No, I, I do not believe in things that are inevitable, okay? I believe in grassroots. I believe that the people need to be heard. I believe that people can organize and be heard. It's just a matter of how to do that. And I'm glad to see some of the other people who went through those same things are teaching others how to do it.
Yeah, and I think this is the best way to, to approach this, this, this project, you know, with, you don't want to go into it individually and get picked off piecemeal. So, I think the towns stand the best chance of success if they, if they band together. And I, I understand that there are similar organizations in some of the other counties that are starting to spring up as well, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
John?
Boston needs this gas. York, Boston wants this gas. And I got a feeling that it's gonna come there. Let the other towns fight it. Let's, I'll take Townsend, let's look out for Townsend, and try to work with these guys and get them to change their route, and run it down the railroad tracks. It won't affect any, any, any place else in town that, the track runs all the way down through there, and then you, and maybe, and if we treat them right, they could even build up the rail trails on top of it. But let's not fight these guys, or at least stay neutral, and, and make sure that they don't get mad at us, so that we can't work with them to get them to run that down. I'm gonna try to see it down the railroad track.
There are alternative routes, such as Route 95. They could come all the way up on the side of 95. There's, no, 95 from down south, okay? Coming right up the coast. They don't have to come across here. I think that, my personal opinion is, they already have their eye on 95, but they were concerned about the flack that they're gonna have to put up with, and they thought that maybe coming through all these little country towns was gonna be an easy thing for them to do.
Yeah.
They are well-schooled. Their marketing is phenomenal, because they have tons of money to put to it. I challenged the Boston Globe to come out here to some of our meetings to find out how serious we are, because there was an article in the Globe a week ago, and it was, it was like plagiarism of the, the press release that we got from...
The radio, the Boston radio station did the same way.
So, you know, it's, it's like, you know, they're, they're just letting things come out, and they have a way of doing things, but go on to the, go on to the internet. Look at what they've done to other communities. Look at the pictures of the devastation that they have left behind. I am not going to not fight them. I am going to fight them, because regardless, we're gonna still be in, at least I can say we did what we needed to do.
I think you're making a mistake.
Well, it's the 60s in me. What can I say, John?
I bet you're the 60s.
I know, I know.
Excuse me?
Yes.
In regards of what's gonna go on with the pipeline, if the federal permitting goes through, the second course of action is gonna be is that we're gonna need a strong committee to make sure these individuals that are installing this line, that are doing all the applications of the horizontal boring, are putting everything back the way they put it in. That's gonna be the second most strongest adversary for us. We're gonna need a good group of people that understand the land, so that we hold them accountable to what they do, every bit of app, installation, all the subsoils, the, everything that they took out is going to be put back correctly. That is the strongest thing we have right now, because if they are doing incorrectly, and the committee is on the ball, they can stop them right in the tracks, bring all parties together, and make sure what they are doing is done correctly for the furtherment of what is gonna happen with our environment and these pipelines. Is it being put in deep enough? Are the subsoils correct? Are the trees, the waters, et cetera, et cetera? Because at that point in time, if the committee is strong and they are on the ball, we can stop them right then and there, because there's a group that will come right in immediately that oversees this installation and will stop them dead in their tracks. Like I said, when the, when they get the permitting, the doors are open. And the only other thing we have to do is to be on the ball to make sure what they are doing is done to the letter of the law.
Well, I think that as people get educated and, and realize that, first of all, Boston needs the gas, I don't really think so.
Russia needs the gas.
Yes, they, they would like, they would like to export it to Canada, and they would like to export it to other countries, okay? We do not have a gas shortage. The reality is that most of the gas that they're talking about running through here is not going to be used by any of the residents here. Yet, everyone here will pay a tariff on their electric bills to pay for it, okay? So, it, it's like they're taxing us, they're taxing us, and we have no benefit from it. No benefit whatsoever. So, am I gonna fight that? Yes, I'm, I'm gonna fight that, okay? Because I don't think that it's right that we should be taxed, and that our conservation land and our environment and our personal property should even be subjected to possible disturbance, you know? Not without, not without a good long hard fight. And prior to, that's right. And prior to the, the permitting, there are hearings, there are hearings. That's a federal permit. We've already been in touch, some of us, with Congressman Songus's office, with Senator Markey's office. Our own, our own Representative Harrington has been meeting, has met with Nikki Songus as well. This is known to be an issue. I know personally of people who have written to our rep, our senator in the state. Hopefully, there are letters going to the governor as well, because I understand he is one of the ones that signed. Oh, yeah, that would be nice. And, and I don't think he fully understood what he was signing. So, the more that they hear, the better it's going to be. So, I'm, I'm totally for this.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Who would be the, the represent, I would have no problem volunteering for this, because I can do it during the day.
I can't do it during the day.
I can do it during the day, but if you'd like, you're our chairperson, so it's most appropriate.
You seem very fired up.
I'm fired.
So, maybe you'd be appropriate, an appropriate person.
You can tell. Yes, I'm fired.
Modestly.
Yes. I would love the job.
That's fine.
Sure. Can I motion?
I would move to make our chairperson, Sulecio, as a representative to the Middlesex Coalition.
And join the Coalition.
For Townsend to join the Coalition.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
One related, maybe now is a good time to bring it up.
It is.
I received a, an email from Kathy Spofford earlier this evening, that the petition, a petition was delivered today to hold a special town meeting to oppose the pipeline. They have reviewed the signatures, and they're confident, Kathy's confident, that there are more than the required 200 signatures. So, that will be formally certified in the next couple of days. So, the Board will need to consider when to have a special town meeting. And you have 45 days from today. So, you don't have to decide it today. If you'd like, we're, we're meeting next week with, with Kinder Morgan anyways. We could include a small business meeting at the beginning or at the end of that meeting to sign the, to sign a warrant.
If we could, I mean, we're meeting with Kinder Morgan at what time?
At 7:00.
At 7:00. Could we meet, just as a board, like at 6:30?
Yeah, that's fine, baby.
Same place, but separate, separate agenda?
Sure.
Okay? So, in case anybody missed that, that's next Wednesday.
Middlesex?
Next Wednesday at North Middlesex High School.
And the three of you will meet together to create a quorum to be able to make, at the school, to be able to consider that of signings. Okay. Very good.
And, so we'll do that first, and then after that is the presentation by Kinder Morgan, if anybody's interested in it.
Thinking about getting all the tractors rounded up for the Agriculture Commission, and just kind of riding down there and let them know what we think about it, too. You know, I mean, that's gonna be a few corn stalks and some pumpkins, but you know how that is with this country boys out here.
Bring your cloves of garlic.
Yes, we will.
Okay, can we have a vote on this? No?
I seconded it.
You seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most enthusiastic, aye.
And anybody that wants to go can go and listen in.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Anybody who wants to come and listen to Kinder Morgan's presentation.
Did you want to announce that June 21st meeting was Saturday?
Oh, this coming Saturday.
Yeah, I had that on my announcement, Leslie.
While we're on the subject, this Saturday, 10:30 at the meeting hall, is a presentation on concerns about the pipeline, is the best way to describe that. It's a couple of groups that have wealth of information about, about the pipeline project, okay?
It'll be Berkshire Environmental Action Team, and NOFRAC Gas and Mass will present an informational organization.
And I'm sure there'll be some other groups there as well.
Ellen, I'm taking it.
Okay, 3.4. Review requests for one-day liquor license for William Towson for the 75th anniversary of Townsend Rod and Gun Club.
I'm going to accuse myself on this, only because I'm a member.
Who are you?
I move that we approve a one-day license for William Towson for the 75th anniversary of the Townsend Rod and Gun Club, to be held on August 23rd, 2014, from 12:00 to 6:00 PM at the Townsend Rod and Gun Club.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carolyn not voting.
Force of habit. Okay, I signed on the clerk spot on almost all the...
I know you did.
Just force of habit.
Takes a while.
3.5. Continued discussion of future of the Hart Library, 274 Main Street. Potential uses and funding sources. Andy?
Yeah, just briefly, I just wanted to clarify one, one portion of the conversation that we had last week, and, and I guess maybe that I wasn't clear when we talked about the Priority Development Fund, grant money that is potentially available for feasibility study on the library, Hart Library. Priority Development Fund is only available for feasibility studies that would be for turning the building into affordable housing, senior or affordable housing. So, I have, I was scheduled to meet with Superintendent Landers this week to, to give her a tour of the, of the building, see what, you know, see if it would work for her, just in a sort of cursory view, if it's even big enough or laid out right. But we had to cancel that with a scheduling snafu, so I'm still gonna be meeting with her, but we can't use the PDF to, to do the feasibility. So, I'd like to, I'd like to work through the process with her, see if there's interest on the part of the schools. If there is, go forward in that direction. If there's not, then come back and, and look at our other options.
I mean, typically, how much is a feasibility study, anyway?
Funding is available up to $15,000.
If it was for housing.
For, for housing. And I would guess that we would need all of it to do, to look at mold, look at lead, look at asbestos, look at the, the heating, electrical systems, plumbing systems, and then come up with some, do some, some preliminary architectural design.
All right, I want to make sure that I understand, though, the money that we talked about is not available if it were the school that we're interested.
That's correct.
But what we're saying, though, is if they would typically give for affordable housing about $15,000, that that's where we're getting our estimate of potentially how much it would cost someone.
And then, again, that's just feasibility, it doesn't, it's not remediation.
It's not remediation, right. But at least it tells you, I have a certain usage in mind, how much would it cost to be up to code for that usage?
Right.
Okay. I, I mean, any comments?
Follow that process through.
Yeah, I'd say, go for it, yes.
Well, it's a beautiful building. I mean, I remember as a kid, you know, going in there, you know, to the library and everything. We have a building inspector, we have an electrical inspector, we have a plumbing inspector, and how hard would it be for us to get, to a degree, some of the raw numbers together to, just to get a ballpark figure of what it would cost us to, to do something? $15,000? To get a general idea as to what the worth of the building, to fix it or not to fix it?
We're not saying we're gonna spend the 15...
No, I, I do, I understand that, so, I do.
But that would, that would be to look at septic, you know?
Septic.
Where we could put a septic system.
Lead mediation, mold, electrical, plumbing, roofing, wood repair, sidewalk repair, et cetera, et cetera.
And then how to take that building and turn that into two or three or four housing units.
Why would we wanna turn something like that into a housing?
No, that was what...
That's what the funding's available.
The housing, from the housing, but we're not looking to do housing, obviously.
We might, but we don't know. We don't know. So, that was, that's the only funding that's available is for creation of housing units. I think, I think it works out best for everybody, and sort of easiest if somebody like the school department could take it over. If we had a use for it, it'd be great, you know? We've done parking. It becomes more difficult to separate that lot, you know, and, and find a place on the lot for septic system, find room for parking, things like that. But if it's a sort of shared use or a municipal use, it becomes easier to work out some of those.
What about the historical value of it? Where can we reach out in just the general?
It's not in a historic, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is there any worth of reaching out into the historical world, that it's part of the Underground Railroad? It's been in this town for how many years now?
85, give or take. Yeah. It's-- Unfortunately, it's not in the historic district and it's not on the list of historic buildings in the Register of Historic Places. For good or for bad, you know, that has its benefits, but it also has its drawbacks.
No, it's just what we exhaust all efforts to see if we can save that building--
Yeah.
For what it's worth.
Yep.
I mean, if you're going to meet with the superintendent and see what she thinks and where it might go from there.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would be kind of-- And they obviously need a home. You know, the administration needs a home. It's supposed to be, according to the district agreement in Townsend, and it's currently housed in Pepperell. So, it would work. But, yeah, see what-- Come back with--
Okay.
On that, okay? At least we're making some kind of progress in checking things off. 3.6 Council On Aging Senior Center Director Continued Discussion For Recruiting A Successor.
Yeah, so, we had left this discussion at the last meeting with the question of who is the appointing authority of the Council On Aging Director? And Carolyn had mentioned the statute that would seem to make the Council On Aging the appointing authority of the director. We've been going from the idea that the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority. And that goes back really to when Stacy Shuttler was appointed as library director. The trustees brought her name forward to the board and the board approved it. So, I do have an opinion in front of you tonight in the supplemental info that I put in front of you, an opinion from Colton Menon Page. There is a lot of material in the middle of the-- In the middle of the opinion, but in the first paragraph and then again in the closing paragraph, he clearly states that it's his opinion that the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority of the Council On Aging.
I only had a chance to briefly read through it, and I can tell you already, I do not agree with it. Not that I think it matters to the Council On Aging by any means, but Mass General Law is pretty clear that they have the authority to appoint it. Again, he's using our personnel policies and procedures, which are not a bylaw. But I got it five minutes before the meeting, so I'd appreciate if we could table it to the next one so I could read through it.
Okay.
No problem.
The only concern that I have is resumes are due next week. Chris is planning to leave around the beginning of August, right?
I don't think that needs to stop.
Yeah, that's--
Yes.
Okay.
There's no reason that you can't start reviewing resumes and all that.
I believe we all agreed on the process, what the Council On Aging wanted.
But we don't have the screening committee in place formally yet, so--
I mean, I think that can continue.
I don't think the board has formally appointed-- The Friends of the Seniors and the Council On Aging put forth a number of names, but there hasn't been a formal creation of the--
Because of the question?
Yeah.
Does it matter?
Can't they have their own ad hoc committee to go through the resumes? Do we need to form something? Then we have to post for it, too?
Well, we've posted for the committee, but there hasn't been-- There hasn't been appointment yet of the committee members.
So, the names--
So, we've already vote-- You've already voted to form it before I--
Correct.
No.
Did we?
Yes.
Oh, so--
We did.
Based on the last discussion.
Okay, so, we voted to form it. It's a screening committee.
Correct.
That doesn't mean it's an appointing committee.
That's correct.
Okay? So, I don't see any problem with going forward and--
Okay.
Doing the work.
I don't either.
So, do you want to do that? You want to do that next-- Next Wednesday as part of that brief business meeting?
What do we have to do?
Appoint members to the screening committee.
Okay, and did we have names for those members?
We have some. We don't have-- We don't have all of the resident-- We asked for two residents as well, unaffiliated.
And we don't have any volunteers that have come forward?
For that.
Do we have anyone here that wants to volunteer?
I was just about to say that.
I have, with the exception of one individual, this Sharon Martin Pibernial, who is--
She's a COA Director in another--
COA Director of what?
In Acton.
Acton, okay. The rest of them, Stacy and Russ Moore and Dave Proffitt, Valerie Adams and myself, we're all town folks. Would work here. Well, I don't work.
Well, you said that's the committee.
But that's the committee. And the reason Sharon's on it is because she can give us some other insights that we may need to reference.
That's fine.
And the other--
Does that mean we have to modify the makeup of the committee?
Having Stacy in there and Russ. Stacy has to interface with the Senior Center Director, just like we do on the Council On Aging. So, we shouldn't be the one that would give you a list of-- And we were thinking of a list of three candidates, number one, choice for us, and then two other follow-up in case there was some glaring thing we missed. And you could go ahead and-- But at least you'd have three members to select.
I mean, I just don't want the process to be held up. So, what do we need to do?
Well, I think maybe the easiest thing is to put it on-- Put the appointments on next week and do that next week. That way--
If we voted to form a committee--
Did we vote for the membership of the committee as well?
Yes.
We voted for the membership.
Four representatives--
Screen committee, not with COA Director, so we can appoint them.
Four representatives of the Friends or the Council On Aging, two residents and the director of the library.
So, it's the two residents that we don't have?
Okay, so, you want to postpone it to wait for the two residents?
Right, right, okay.
We've got one. We've got one.
So, we've got one. We need a second one. Anybody else?
The only thing I'm not clear on is I thought we agreed to go on what Mr. Snap in the COA had recommended to us. Are you saying we voted something different? Maybe I'm not understanding.
Exactly, that was my impression.
That was what I thought we--
And then you come up with two-- You come up with a document today that I have no knowledge of, and I would like to have a copy of it. If you're going to make a decision next week or your next meeting based on you reading those documents and that affects what we're about to choose, I don't think that that's, you know, on the up and up.
Well, I think it's consistent, Ed, with what we talked about before because it was four representatives from the Council On Aging or the Friends of the Seniors. And so, that presumably could be you, Valerie, Dave and Russ. Two residents. Like I said, we have one that's expressed interest and the director of the library. So, it's really the-- The initial thought was a five-person board. Four from the Council or the Friends and the library director. And then the board decided that they wanted some-- They wanted to expand it a little bit and get a little bit more of general citizen or general resident involvement. So, it doesn't--
Didn't change--
I don't think it really changes what we talked about initially.
The only thing in question is that Carolyn's asked for is just who is the appointing authority.
Of the director.
But it doesn't stop us from still starting the screening process.
Right.
Well, that would be-- That's also my question. From what I understand from the state bylaws that falls out with this, we're the ones that are actually picking it and you're the one-- And you folks up there are the ones to bless it and sign off on it. So, I'm a little confused about this other document.
All we're doing is-- We just got this document. Carolyn's just asking for another week to look it over, that's all.
And this is only about the appointment of the director itself? This isn't about the screening committee?
It's not about the screening committee. It doesn't have anything to do with that.
We can do the appointment.
Sorry if I was unclear on that. It has nothing to do with the--
It just-- All we have to do next week is say, yes, these are the people, okay? Because we already said, here's the screening committee. This is what it's going to be made up of. Here are the names to go with it. You can begin your work, okay? You can still get the resumes. The only thing that Carolyn wanted a little bit more time on was just to look this over, which was simply the appointing authority.
Yes, that's all.
Okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So, we'll push that into the next little half-hour session. Hmm, I wonder how many other things we have in the little half-hour session? Okay, 3.7 Review Request For A Transfer Of Appropriations For The Board Of Health. Andy? It looks like the next few are all transferred.
Yeah, this is primarily for the costs associated with the mailing of the flyer that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting tonight. Transferring some funds out of landfill services into Board of Health Services.
Landfill Professional Services, that's where the engineering contract comes out of, right?
It's the maintenance.
The maintenance.
It's the mowing and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two landfill accounts.
I would move to approve the municipal relief transfer in the amount of $1,500 to be transferred to the Board of Health Professional Services Account 001-05520, $5,300. Be transferred from the landfill professional services, 001-04430, $5,300.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I forgot to put the stickies on.
So, I have to read?
I'll lead you through it.
Just need me, right?
Yeah.
3.8 Review Request For A Transfer Of Appropriations For The Treasurer In The Amount Of $3,000.
This is to cover for some additional personnel costs with the treasurer in order to get caught up on some of the activity down there, especially with respect to some of the tax title issues. We've allowed Kate to work some additional hours beyond what was budgeted.
So, by tax title issues, you mean collection of taxes that are in arrears?
Correct.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve the municipal relief transfer in the amount of $3,000 to be transferred to the treasurer's salary account, 145-5100, to be transferred from the collector's salary account, 146-5100.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I on that, Carolyn?
Yes.
3.9 Review Request For A Transfer Of Appropriations For Legal Services In The Amount Of $3,000. Andy?
Yeah, we're getting a little tight on legal services this year. Historically, or in the recent years, we haven't-- We haven't typically used the majority of our legal budget. However, with all of the four collective bargaining groups that were renegotiated this year, or three renegotiated, and then we had the new group representing the fire-- The firefighters, we did incur some additional costs in legal and primarily in the area of collective bargaining negotiations.
Please feel comfortable in taking it out of insurance. I know we had talked about maybe changing it to health.
Yeah, we've got-- I just got-- Actually, after you and I spoke today, I've got an update. And we're still at-- We're still at $8,000 in property and liability insurance. We'll have a little cost associated with workers comp on it, but we don't expect that it will be very significant.
Take the girl off the finance committee, but you can't take the finance committee off.
Okay, I would move to approve the municipal relief transfer in the amount of $3,000 to be transferred to the general liability account, 950-5740, to legal services account, 151-5300.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's like doing the bills. 310 Review Request For A Transfer Of Appropriations For The Facilities Department In The Amount Of $8,000. Andy?
Yeah, we talked a lot a couple of months ago about the billing issue or the meter issue that we had in this building. And we had been undercharged for some period of time by Unitil for our gas usage. They-- Fortunately, they caught that and corrected that. And so, we thought that we would be okay. We looked at this as we were approaching town meeting. We thought that we were going to be all right, but it turns out that we're running a deficit in the energy. So, looking for $8,000 to be transferred from health insurance to cover expected energy costs.
And that's because we're still paying for what we didn't pay before?
No, we've paid-- We've paid up there. It's just that--
Oh, that's right.
Year over year, the difference is fairly dramatic.
And I take it we don't have enough off the bottom line to cover it? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, yeah.
I would move to approve the municipal relief transfer in the amount of $8,000 to be transferred from our health insurance account, 914-5740, and be transferred to the facilities department energy account, 191-5210.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 311 Review Request For A Transfer Of Appropriations For The Plumbing Inspector In The Amount Of $600.
This is for-- As a result of the uptick in permit activity, the plumbing inspector is incurring a greater amount of mileage reimbursements. He's going to more places to check on more permits, so in general, it's not a bad problem to have in the case of uptick in our local economy. Only $600.
That's not for classes? I thought it was for his class that he had to take annually.
As Rich told me, it was for reimbursement for mileage.
Okay. I would move to approve the municipal relief transfer in the amount of $600 to be transferred from the interest on short-term loans account number 759-5925 and transferred to plumbing inspector mileage account, 243-5710.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 312 Review Request Of Unitil To Cross, Alter Or Construct Within A Public Way For Installation Of A Gas Service At 8 South Street. Andy?
Pretty straightforward request from Unitil, just installing a gas service. They need permission from the town, from the board, to excavate in the street.
I would move that we approve the request of Unitil to cross, alter or construct within a public way for the installation of gas service at 8 South Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Each one of you signs there. Someday we'll update that for them.
313 Discuss Charter Committee And Review Of Home Rule Charter. This is a reminder, is it not?
Correct, yeah. You asked me to put this on to-- I think just for the purpose of kind of shaking the trees to see if we can get some people interested.
Yes, we need volunteers.
Seven-member committee. We've got a few people who have volunteered, but not enough to fill the committee at this point.
Please.
It's just a request for volunteers to go through the charter. A group did that a couple of years ago, but there were no substantive changes. It was really more grammar changes and punctuation kind-- You know, just rewording kinds of things. But it really is a good idea to go through on a regular basis and make sure that what we wrote a few years ago is, in fact, what we still want to have in there. And this is just a plea for-- We've been waiting for a few months now for people to come forward and be willing to meet to just go over that. The more that we-- The more that we change, the more that we find issues, the more we really need to look at those things and make sure that the wording is exactly what we want it to be or closer to or explains better. to, or explains better what our intention is. And then to bring it to the town so that the town can vote, yes, this is what our intention is. So just a plea, if you're interested, please give a call and let us know. Carolyn?
I really was involved and didn't follow it, but didn't they give a presentation suggestion on some of the changes that the last charter committee?
And we were actually kind of expecting, I was anyway, expecting a full report, if you will, and recommendations.
Yeah.
It never really happened. It was just, you know, here are the changes, but they ended up not going any further in rec, they had some recommendations.
Don't we have to accept the changes and go forward?
But what were we waiting for? Wasn't Gene gonna write something up?
They provided some, they provided...
Some commentary is what we got.
Yeah, they provided a list of recommended changes, and that were primarily, as you said, to grammatical and spelling and some layout. And some of it was shifting a few sections around. And then they identified a number of other areas that they deemed were worthy of further review, but were beyond what they perceived their scope to be. We didn't get, they didn't provide any articles for town meeting adoption. And then we, the board, as I recall, said, well, we've got these other issues that they've identified that need further study, so let's do it all at once.
Let's do a real charter committee. They didn't feel like they were.
Yeah, do all the grammatical stuff as well as the substantive stuff all at the same time.
So I always thought, I'm gonna have to read through all my stuff from before, but I thought substantive stuff had to be done by an elected charter commission.
No.
And I do have, I do have an opinion from council on this issue. I'll pass it down so everybody has it.
I guess Mr. Riley came out and spoke with that committee and explained.
Yeah, I was there.
Oh.
Yeah.
See, I was just wondering what had happened prior, 'cause I wasn't...
Yeah, there's two ways that you can modify the charter. You can do an elected charter commission, and that process tends to run a couple of years. That's a process Pepperell just went through.
Yes.
And they had an article or a question on the ballot, do you support the creation of a charter commission, and a slate of candidates. That committee was, commission was approved over in Pepperell. That committee then, I think, has 18 months to complete its work. It's been a while since I looked at it. And report back to the town and prepare a charter for adoption, and it's an up or down vote. There's no amendments. And so that's what was on their ballot back in April. The charter committee process is a little bit more streamlined. It's...
If you can get the volunteers.
Yeah, it's a little bit, it's a little longer than what we went through with converting the collector from elected to appointed, but it sort of follows the same process that you would bring it to town meeting. Town meeting approves it, then it gets filed as a special act, and the legislature approves.
So what substantive changes are you looking for that you'd want to make a special act out of them?
Well, you'd have to have a special act even to change grammar.
The housekeeping.
The housekeeping.
I'm gonna have to read through stuff. It's been so long since I...
Everything requires either a commission or a special act.
The other thing I did, I know I spoke to you earlier about it, Andy, is we need to get together and talk about having the bylaw review committee as outlined and mandated in the charter. So maybe that's something that could be done in conjunction with.
I don't know if conjunction is the right, we're having trouble getting anybody for the charter.
Yeah, I was thinking about that after you mentioned that, and I think where the, if you take it in a sort of hierarchical approach, it makes sense to do the charter first and then do the bylaw review.
And then know if it could be incorporated into the charge together.
Well, I think it could be an offshoot. I just think that there's a possibility that things would change in the charter that would affect how you want to lay out your bylaws.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So plea for involvement, please. 314, review request of Police Chief Irving Marshall to accept a donation in the amount of $6,000 from Give Back Ride.
Yeah, Chief forwarded this today. The Give Back Ride has offered to provide a $6,000 donation. Gifts need to be accepted by the town, and the chief is asking that it be, there's an email in front of you tonight in the supplemental material that I gave you, asking that it be put into their gifts and donations account, and it will be used for youth and senior programs.
Do we have to vote to put this into their donation account? Do they have a donation account for the senior program that they run?
Um, he's asked that we specifically, that the board specifically vote to put it into the gifts and donations account.
Okay, so it's just called gifts and donation for him, or does he have specific ones for different purposes?
Uh, he says just gifts and donations.
Okay. I would move that the board accept the generous $6,000 donation from the Give Back Ride organization to the Townsend Police Department Gifts and Donation Account.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 315, review and approve rental purchase agreement with H.P. Fairfield Ford Johnson Vac Sweeper Model VT650.
I talked about this last meeting when we were talking about a transfer. If you recall, a town meeting, town meeting approved an appropriation for about $185,000 for a street sweeper, and then another, I believe it was 50, for a catch basin cleaner. Ed Kukla talked to H.P. Fairfield, which is the equipment vendor, and they have a combination unit. It's a traditional street sweeper, but it also has a vacuum attachment that can be used for cleaning catch bases. Together, the purchase price is $215,000, so it would save us about $20,000 over what we would pay if we bought the two items separately, the street sweeper and the catch basin cleaner. So we did, the board did approve a transfer at the meeting two weeks ago to put some money into equipment for the purpose of funding essentially a rental that would cover this, the remainder of this fiscal year, and would act as a down payment on the machine. And then we would go out and we would borrow the amount that was approved by town meeting. I talked to town council about this, both on the procurement end and on the municipal finance end, and we're okay on both sides of this issue. This is a state contract that H.P. Fairfield has for this particular sweeper, so we don't have to go out and do a procurement for this. And there's no issue of making a purchase using a combination of capital money and operating money. And also no problem in taking capital from fiscal 15 and operating from fiscal 14. So it's a little bit different, but essentially the costs that we're paying, the $25,000 cost that we're paying in fiscal 14 will be applied to a credit in fiscal 2015 to pay for the unit. And again, in the long run, it saves us about $20,000.
Questions? Carolyn?
Yeah, it says anytime between July 1, 2014, July 31, 2014, we're gonna be allowed to take the $25 rental fee to apply it towards a purchase. But you said you weren't gonna go out to borrow for the capital plan to the fall, so how are we gonna go out and borrow right now for the actual sweeper?
Well, we can go out earlier for the sweeper if we need to. We already did the borrowing for the roadwork, $150,000 for the roadwork. So we can, if need be, we can go out sooner and do the borrowing for that, separate from the remainder of the borrowing.
Yeah, 'cause it only gives us a month for the $25 rental fee to go against the purchase price. So we need to get moving and go out to borrow for that now, if that's the intent.
Right.
And the only other thing is it says sweeper will be delivered on June 11, 2014, so I'm assuming we have a sweeper here?
It is here, yep. It's not being used.
Before we approved it?
It's not being used yet, but it has been delivered.
They trust us. Has Kim looked at this?
Uh, Kim's out this week, but we had talked about it beforehand, and on a, in terms of a legal issue, she didn't have a problem with it. The concern that she had initially was that the rental was going to be 30,000, and she flagged that, obviously, as being above the threshold for procurement.
Yes.
But she said, other than that, there's no issue. And again, I spoke with council this morning, one of the municipal finance people, and they didn't have an issue with it as well.
So is the borrowing something that we can turn around before the 31st?
We can turn it around before the end of July, yes.
Okay. Otherwise, we'd use that down, we'd lose that deposit.
Andrea?
Since this piece of equipment didn't appear on the capital plan, either yours or ours, did council think that because it did the jobs of two of the things on there, that it was all right?
Yeah, because both pieces appear on the capital plan. The sweeper and the clamshell basin cleaner.
Yeah, but this other one isn't a clamshell cleaner.
Correct.
It would replace that, but it's a different style. It's a different piece of equipment entirely.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a modification of a traditional street sweeper.
But he thought that still fit the plan.
Yes.
What were you thinking, that we'd be forced to buy two separate pieces?
No, I thought that we would have to reexamine it another time, because I didn't think it fit the bill, because it wasn't on there. And I didn't think that, I thought that a certain amount of funding was funded for that item, and I didn't think you could change the capital planning budget once it was voted by adding more money to it.
It was 190, though. That was what, that was what was voted, right? The 190?
I think it was 185 and change.
But the 30,000 that we're taking to rent it early, to do it, to be a coming down payment, go on, that was, that is to essentially make the inroads on capital purchase, and that money wasn't figured in there, it's coming from a different source.
Right, it's comparable, though, to what the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee did earlier this year with the police department's generator, I think.
Yeah, but that was different in the sense that we mistaken and didn't fund enough in the first place. This was no mistake. We voted something, and then something else came along, and we changed it.
Right, but town meeting doesn't, town meeting doesn't look at the intent. Town meeting looks at how much was appropriated for the generator, and then the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee appropriated, you know, released more money to go towards that. So it's really no, it's really no different from that.
I see it very differently, but if we're all right, then we're all right, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, regards to the generator, too, that, what we had to approve from the reserve fund was labor to install the electrical and stuff. It wasn't the actual generator itself.
Well, that's right.
Yeah. So I would move to approve the rental purchase agreement with H.P. Fairfield Ford Johnson Vac Sweeper Model VT650 contingent upon review by our town accountant.
Second.
That's okay.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4.1, review request of the Conservation Commission to appoint Emily Norton for a term from June 17, 2014, through June 30, 2015, and Veronica Kell for a term from June 17, 2014, to June 30, 2016.
There is some additional information on this in front of you tonight, Andy. Some information from the MACC, the Mass Association of Conservation Commission.
You looking just for me? I'm sorry.
Um, yes.
Just give me a second so I can give it my full attention here as well.
Yep.
Why am I the only one on this? Why does that make me uncomfortable? I like it when you guys...
I don't like it when you're just signing, especially stuff like that.
Sign it, too.
You have a nice house, still.
Thanks, I think.
Okay. So if I might, we received a letter from a conservation commissioner. Would you want me to read that into the record while you're signing? From Jennifer?
Yeah, sure. It's fine. Thank you.
Are we signing any appointments as we speak right now?
We just talking about it right now?
We received a letter today from the Townsend Conservation Commissioner Jennifer Pettit to Townsend Selectmen. I understand the concerns about the selection of volunteers for appointment to the Townsend Conservation Commission have been brought to your attention. This was a difficult choice for our board, as we had three applicants for two positions. I have included the guidance that I referred to in making my decision, as well as the volunteer response form, and more information we received from the applicants and personal interviews. I talked with commissioners and selectmen in other communities, as well as calling MACC for guidance. Individuals with environmental protection and/or experience in conservation were recommended by everyone I spoke with. As our two most recent commissioners have little to no experience, I was not willing to recommend a third person with no experience of working on that board, protecting the environment, or having any in-depth knowledge of the environment. We chose to recommend our two newest commissioners, as they are active farmers. In their case, the board wanted to create a liaison with the farming community, as well as the board members who might specialize in understanding and implementing agricultural wetland regulations. I'm truly sorry that it took so long to decide to not recommend Steve Marshall. Months ago, when we were going to vote on this, our new member requested more time to make a decision, so the vote was tabled. As we are now meeting only once a month, the decision took much longer. Had we voted then, I would not have recommended Mr. Marshall. The Conservation Commission appreciates its interest and has apologized for the length of time this decision took. We have offered to work with him as an associate member, something I did before becoming a board member. I trust the selectmen will evaluate the applicants for qualifications that will best serve our town. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Jennifer Pettit. And she did include the MACC guidelines and the volunteer response forms.
Yes, I definitely have some concerns with it. I'm on the Conservation Commission. It was six months ago that Steve Marshall had come on to, he put his paperwork in, he wanted to be onto the board, which is fine, everybody understands that. But it seems as though they wanted him to come to one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, four meetings, five meetings, and six. Then the decision was that, well, he seemed to have found two other individuals that demonstrate a great, great deal of our knowledge above and beyond what Steve may possibly offer for the commission. And I have trouble with that, okay? Reason being, he was asked to come to these meetings, he went, he did his due diligence. We should have brought him aboard. We had the ability to do it, and that was my decision to table it until we allowed John to acclimate to the board, and we all worked together. Now, Mrs. Kell and Mrs. Norton were brought upon, which is, they are very knowledgeable, I don't dispute this. There's a principle involved in this. Now, if any one of you were asked to come to a meeting, you put in your papers, you did your due diligence, you wanted to be onto the commission, should he have not been brought on prior to these two women? If you dealt with that, if you, any one of you were dealt that type of a situation, and they said, well, now, we feel as though these other individuals are far more inept than you, far more intelligent than you, we don't want you upon the board. There's a principle behind this, and I'm really upset about that, how they dealt with that. And we could have done much better. And I don't think it's gonna go away, if this is how we're gonna deal with people.
So let me ask you... Let me ask you a question.
When I first came on, six years ago, I was very naive, but I was willing to learn. And I did learn, and I am learning, and I'm increasing my knowledge. So is it truly a knowledge situation that we're looking at here?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It sounds like what you're saying is that the expectation, or your expectation, and was that if this person came to those meetings and did what they were being asked, that that was their training ground, if you will, and that they would get an appointment?
It was a matter of they wanted him to acclimate, see what the meetings were, what's involved in it, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. My point being, there was nobody else that had signed up to be on the commission. It's been three of us running the commission for a full year.
What's the, what's the number again? How many?
Seven.
Seven?
Correct.
And there've been three?
It's been myself, Jennifer, and Karen for a full year. Now, my point again being, we found Mary Small, who is the co-chair of the commission, who's been absent for pretty much a year, which puts us in the position where I, we don't miss a meeting so that we don't miss a quorum. Now...
Is there not, Carolyn, excuse me, isn't there something written somewhere that says if somebody doesn't show up for X number of meetings?
In our charter, but they would have to come to us and let us know that they want us to, they'd have to send a registered letter to them.
Correct.
And then come to us and let us know they want to be a vacant.
I understand.
But if they agreed to allow her to be out, then?
Yeah, okay.
Well, they agreed for her to be out due to her, I guess it was, hang on a minute, her workload and her, what she was dealing with as far as school and whatnot, which I understand. I can accept that to a degree, okay? I don't miss any sidewalks. I don't miss any meetings. I still do 50 hours a week for UPS. I still keep my farm going, and I'm the chair on the act commission. So I throw that out. I don't go with that. We've been struggling on the board. I brought John upon, which he is a good member. He's going to do a good job for us. We needed another member. Steve was willing to step up to the plate and come to the board. And we seem to have waited a long time for two other individuals to be brought upon. Principle here. We're looking at a situation in principle.
So the two people that we have in front of us being recommended for an appointment, please, let's have just one conversation at a time. The two people that we have before us, what was the vote of your, of the Conservation Commission?
Did we have a vote?
Was it voted at a Conservation Commission meeting?
Yes.
Karen?
When we voted for Emily, it was unanimous to recommend appointment. For Veronica, it was three to two.
Pardon me?
Three to two in favor of appointing.
I'm confused. I thought that there were only three people.
Mary came back a couple of months ago.
Just in time, it seemed.
Hold on. So that means there are four people?
Five.
Five.
Because who did they put John with?
Because?
John was added a few months ago.
John was added.
Okay.
John was added in March.
Okay.
So they had four, but one was, was not attending regularly. Then they added John, and then Mary began attending more.
So we had, we had five people voted on both of these appointments.
Correct.
And the majority voted?
Correct.
The meeting that we had for the appointments, Mary Small showed up for it, and they voted Steve down. They said he wasn't intelligent enough.
It was said in an open meeting, the lack of the individual's mentality, he wasn't in favor.
Hold on.
Come on now. Karen had to apologize for the comment.
Hold on, okay? One second, John. If this is, if what I'm seeing right now is any indication of what's going on on that commission, I'm not happy, okay? I expect more professionalism from a committee, especially a committee that's been charged with such an important job. And if it's a matter of differences in philosophy regarding the environment, that's going to happen. That is going to happen. But I'm, I'm hearing undertones of other things happening. And that disturbs me because it's an appointed board that we count on. And it makes me begin to question the makeup of the board right now in general. I don't know, I mean, we appoint the commission initially, and then after that, the commission says who else they would appoint. Once the initial...
The commission provides a recommendation on additional members.
I, I get, I'll be with you in a second, John. I just need to, I need to wrap my mind around this. I mean, we're a different board. And I think we're getting along okay. There's differences in philosophy. There's differences in background. It's not always easy. But you kind of have to put that aside, and you have to find out what are our meeting grounds here. It's not going to work if everybody's butting heads all the time. Somebody's got to work that out. I'm just not convinced as to how yet. I, I'm sorry. John, you've had your hand up.
All right. I've served on the Conservation Commission ten years. And I'll tell you, all those years, it was very hard to get seven members. And now it looks like you've got more than seven members. The Conservation Commission is, has a lot to do with the environment, but its main function is to enforce the law. It's, the main function is to enforce the law fairly and openly.
I agree.
And they need to work together. So I have a suggestion to make, that you appoint seven people, and then appoint the other person as an alternate, so that when there is nobody, when they don't have seven members, they are sitting there, the alternate comes in and sits in and can vote and fill in. I don't know if it's legal appoint, put the alternates. Other, other groups have them.
I looked into that, John. That was my idea when I had talked to some of the conservation. And we can have associate members on there. That's fine. But there's nothing in our law that allows them to vote unless we file special legislation. Some of the communities in Massachusetts have done that, so that your associate could vote on issues. But we could certainly appoint an associate, which you've had in the past, to...
Yeah, well, I, I understand. I wasn't talking about, I was talking about an alternate, just like the board, the Board of...
Board of Appeals.
The Board of Appeals has them. The Planning Board has them.
And would we need approval for that?
Yeah, that...
For that to be a voting member in absence of a member?
Yeah. The state law allows you to have alternate members or associate members for Planning Board and for Zoning Board of Appeals, and there may be some other committees that can do that as well. The same provision is, doesn't exist in the Wetlands Protection Act or in the, I should say, in the Conservation Commission Act. There's no provision for alternates. So you'd have to have a special act of the legislature to create the position of alternate Conservation Commissioner, and to allow them to sit in on hearings and things like that.
These are the different towns that have done that in your acts.
And even with, even with Planning Boards and Zoning Boards of Appeals, there are certain limitations on the types of hearings that they can participate in.
Well, at the Conservation, no member can, if somebody misses part of the presentation or part of the review of any application, they cannot vote. So if one person is out for the night, they can't turn around and vote on an application, so.
So if you have a presentation one evening?
That's right. And somebody's missing.
And the vote is the next evening?
Next evening or two evenings down the road, they cannot vote.
That makes sense.
Just before we get off, the voting members of the Conservation Commission, giving alternate members the right vote is possible only through charter provision or a special act of the legislature.
Right. Basically, that's what Andy and Carolyn were both saying, so.
Colin?
This, these appointments, I've been, both sides of the coin, I've heard from. I propose that we have a joint meeting of the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen to kind of work this through, because I'm not comfortable when there's so much animosity. I'm not comfortable making these appointments. And if we vote tonight, I'm not voting. I'm planning on abstaining.
That's an interesting word that you used. I didn't realize it was that serious, but... Well, Carolyn?
I, too, have heard from both sides of the coin. And I think what we need to get back to is having adult-like conversation and getting some issues out on the table. I agree that if you're having somebody come to the meetings and they, they're doing this because they feel they want to be part of the committee, we shouldn't be trying to exclude people like that. However, if you have Conservation, they're looking at qualifications, and the two appointments that they move forward do have excellent qualifications. So I think a little bit of compromise is here, and that's when I was thinking over the weekend of the alternate appointment. Maybe a conversation can happen, maybe you sue or you call and commediate, or sit in with the Conservation Commission and get everybody to agree, because everybody can be on this board. We should be thankful that everybody wants to be on this board. We can't get anybody on the Charter Committee. So I think there's a reasonable way to do it, you know?
I, I think it's wonderful that we have so many people interested. I love it. Don't go away.
But it was a little interesting for a full year that we only had three people.
Yeah, and I'm going to chastise the whole committee for that, okay? Because regardless of what the reason was, that that member was not there, if a member, if anyone that's appointed or elected to a, to a group is, is going to be absent, in essence, what they're saying is, I can't make that as a commitment right now. And yet, we need that commitment. You don't sign up for something, and I don't care what the reason is. If you can't make the commitment, you shouldn't be on the board at the time, okay? Just a second, okay? So I'm going to chastise the commission for not having addressed that formally and said, you know what, we understand totally where you're coming from. It's fine. We understand you've got some, some stuff going on in your life. Maybe another time would be better. But right now, we need a sitting member, okay? So I would urge anyone that, that has that kind of a situation, myself included, if I, if I ran into an issue where I felt like I couldn't make a commitment, my responsibility is to say that. And the board's responsibility is to the town. And if I simply stopped showing up, it would be their responsibility to have someone else come in my place, or elected in my place. So that's not something that should be taken lightly, okay? And this isn't just, you know, let's all get together and have a good time. It's a, it's a commitment. Leslie?
Sorry. I'd just like to point out that Mary did offer her resignation to the commission, and the commission didn't accept it because her value was so important to the commission.
But the value was not important if she does not show up?
We didn't have anybody else in line.
I accepted it.
It, 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 it can't be both. It can't be both. We can't just have it both ways. Yes.
How is it that I can maintain?
John, hold on.
Well, I, I've been going to meetings, sitting in the audience, and I never heard that conversation come on.
I'm sorry. I don't know you.
Karen Hill. I own a lot here in Townsend. The Conservation cannot be...
Are you a resident?
I'm a taxpayer.
Are you a resident of the town?
I'm not a resident. I'm a taxpayer.
Okay. Could I go over to Karen, please, then?
Absolutely.
Karen?
I just wanted to point out that the Conservation Commission isn't voted, so we can't discuss amongst ourselves.
Which is why?
You can't do deliberating.
I didn't want to have a conversation amongst ourselves. That's all.
Okay. I can appreciate that. But you're not deliberating on anything either, so?
No.
Okay. You're not taking any votes, right?
No, we made our vote.
Okay. It, this is just a discussion, okay? I am inclined to agree with my colleagues that some discussions need to take place in some, some, you know, sitting down and talking it through. I also totally agree with John. As much as I am, I consider myself to be an avid environmentalist, I still believe that the main charge is to uphold the law. And that becomes pretty black and white at some point in time, okay? But it's difficult to do that if your interpretation of the law is colored by what your opinion happens to be. And it sounds like opinions are kind of getting into this. Opinions cannot come into it other than as part of the deliberation and looking at the facts, okay? The law is the law, and there are interpretations of the law, and those can be challenged. What I'm more concerned with is to make this a real working committee, okay? A real working, good committee that feels good about their members and can talk and differ, but still go with what the majority votes, okay? So I'm not, I'm not at all inclined to vote on anything right now. I would be willing to sit with the group. I would love it if my colleagues were to join.
I think a joint session, a joint meeting would be...
I think it, I think it would be more...
So we will take some time to really look at this and peel this onion back a little and look at some of these layers.
I think we're going to do some mediation.
Very good.
Okay?
Can I play for that?
We'll, we'll look at our calendars and put a date together. What's your concern?
Jennifer and I are term candidates.
My understanding was that...
Continue with your government that...
Yeah, you continue until, until somebody's reappointed, so, or appointed.
You could reappoint them, because you're not talking about these three?
That's true.
You can't, yeah, you can't be reappointed.
Jennifer and Karen are on the reappointment list under the next item.
Oh, okay. So that's all set.
So you'll be on the committee's side.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Try to set something up.
Good. That would be great. So, so they're tabled for the time being. Veronica and Mrs. Norton.
Yeah, we're not going to do any appointments until we all...
We can sit down.
Sit down and figure out what's going on, get it out.
Good understanding and get back...
Figure out, are we all on the same page in terms of what our goals and responsibilities are, and, and where do we have to march to, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. So Andy, we'll try to set something up, please, on that. Oh, 4.2, review and approve annual appointments. Did we get a list, because I...
Yep.
Yeah, it's in front of you tonight.
Oh, there it is.
I thought this, it took us a little bit longer to put it together.
Yeah, because I was looking for it in my packet.
And if you wanted to put this off to next week so you could review it, that wouldn't cause any harm. And Karen just pointed out to me that we didn't include, did not include Karen and Jennifer because we didn't get the letter yet, so we were holding up, waiting for a letter in that regard, so. So if you want to move forward tonight, it would be appropriate to include them. If you want to put it off to next week, we can update the list to include them.
I don't have a problem adding them to this list.
No, I don't either. Let's just get it done. It's not like we're going to argue with anything that's on here.
So it'd be Karen Chapman, and it would be expiring 2017, is that right, Karen?
Yes.
Do you want me to go through the list and start?
Should we wait and do it? One more thing to Wednesday?
No.
She's got a lot of...
We don't typically go through the list, it becomes part of the record.
You're just going to do it as part of the record, even though the different terms?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just, it all becomes part of the record, I don't think we read it last year either.
No, we didn't, we haven't for the last couple.
No. Yeah, take a minute if you like.
It's all reappointments anyway?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Yeah, we didn't put any new appointments on, so everybody on the list is a, is a reappointment.
So if we could add, add the...
Yeah, we'll add Jennifer and Karen.
I would move to approve the FY 2015 Appointments of Personnel and Officials as attached...
With the addition?
With the addition of Karen Chapman for term effective July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017, and Jennifer Pettit from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017 to the Townsend Conservation Commission.
May I ask a question?
Do I have a second? Hold on.
Second.
Thank you, yes.
Karen and Leslie were not voted, I mean not Leslie, I'm sorry, Jennifer, were not voted on at the last meeting, that was tabled till the following, till next July, they're a reappointment. That Conservation tabled the vote till next July, when hopefully they have new members. It was a tied vote for Karen, and they tabled Jennifer till next month. You weren't there.
And what is the usual process for Conservation for reappointments? Do you guys vote and then refer them to us?
Is that what happens everywhere else? All these other...
Typically, we get a, we get either something from the committee or from the individuals asking to be reappointed.
And you didn't get that for this?
Correct.
Let's just settle this at the, if we enjoy a meeting.
If you don't, if you don't appoint, if you don't reappoint them, they continue...
They're going to continue anyway, so let's fail. Okay, I would say take them off of the motion.
I would amend the motion to not include Karen Chapman and Jennifer Pettit.
But that does not mean that they are not still members, they are still members.
They continue on and hold over.
They continue until someone else takes their place.
And they will be reappointed.
They should be reappointed, they definitely should be reappointed.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe, hold on, I don't want to hear this, guys, because you know what, it's within our authority to change things, it really is. And I, if this is the kind of professionalism that's going on, I'm very disappointed, extremely disappointed. So, nothing is guaranteed.
I second the amendment.
Been moved and seconded to make the appointments as presented in this document as attached. All those in favor?
Aye.
4.3, review request of Police Chief Irving Marshall to appoint Brent Davis as a police officer from June 19th, 2014 through June 30th, 2014.
I would move that we appoint Brent Davis as a police officer from June 19th, 2014 to June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Selectmen updates and reports.
Actually, I kind of typed stuff up, because there was a few things I wanted to talk to the board about, but since it's really late, I'd like you guys to have this, and maybe we could talk about it as the next...
Sure.
Regular meeting?
Yeah, if you want to.
No more Wednesday?
It's just a quick type, so if there's any typos, I apologize. Thank you, Karen. You're welcome.
I did have one thing. On Saturday, this Saturday, at the dedication of St. John's Building is happening on the... Why are you laughing at me?
She's not.
Yes, you are, you're both laughing.
No, she's not. No.
It's happening at dedication of the new building at St. John's, it's happening, there's going to be a mass that Cardinal Sean O'Malley will be celebrating, and it's going to be quite, it's a, it's a big deal, because the churches really needed a new facility for a long time. And they had wanted a proclamation for the event, however, they thought I was going to write it for them, so there was a little miscommunication, so I found that out today, so I didn't have time to do anything. So what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion that we sign a proclamation out of session so that I can still read it at the dedication this Saturday, and then we can sign it next week.
Second. Second. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Andy, can you help with that?
Sure can.
Thank you. Congratulations to St. John's.
A couple of announcements, just, I know earlier we had talked about the June 21st meeting at 10:30 at the Townsend Meeting Hall for the pipeline, but also just a reminder, on June 25th at 7 o'clock, North Middlesex, the Selectmen will be meeting with Kindred Morgan on the pipeline. Additionally, let's see, on Wednesday night, June 18th, TEMA will present an Animals and Disaster Program at the Highway Department from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The State of Massachusetts Animal Response Team will talk about animals sheltering, and in an emergency, all residents who have animals are encouraged to attend. And then it looks like the last announcement we have here is, didn't we already read this, the VFW band concert?
Yeah, we read it.
Yes, this was done last time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's it.
All set, thank you. Do you have anything else, Colin?
Nope.
I'm all set. Town Administrator, updates and reports, Andy?
Just one thing, tax bills will be coming out at the end of the month.
Thanks.
Probably, I know, like Santa Claus. A slight difference in the way that tax bills are going to be presented this year, you'll be receiving envelopes again, I think in the past, we used to send envelopes. We're still going to do a twice-a-year mailing of tax bills, you'll get two envelopes in the mail, and you'll get, for returning your payment, and you'll get two stubs, one for your, for your July bill and one for the November bill. Same thing will happen again in January when we send out the bills at that time, so. And we talked about before, bills, the return envelopes will not bring your tax payments here, they'll go to an off-site processing center, but it's, it's all legitimate, we have a contract in place with, with the bank that will be doing that, and I forget where the, exactly where the processing center is, but the envelopes that you get with your bills are legit. And hopefully it makes things, make things easier for people.
And if you use those envelopes, it's going to save us a little bit of people having to process things by hand and the cost associated with that as well, so...
It should streamline our operations.
It's no different than a lot of the bills that you get, they get processed through a bank anyway, so. Thank you, anything else? No?
Nothing else.
Okay, 5.3, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants. I would move that we approve and sign the bills payable, payroll warrant out of session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last item is executive session, under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to the Telecommunications Union. I have a motion, I would assume we're not coming back into open session.
Correct.
I would move under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respects to the Telecommunications Union and to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
This would require a roll call, please. Carolyn Smythe, aye.
Colin Nav, aye.
Sulisio, aye. Are you waiting for Karen? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.